I'd like to call to order the February 6, 2023 Board of County Commissioners meeting. The invocation will be given by Mr. Commissioner Yoder and I will do the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Our kind and much gracious, we appreciate the opportunity that you've given us to be able together in this meeting. We'd ask that you be with our citizens, be with our emergency personnel, be with our leaders both on the national, state, and local level, be with those victims and those families after the tremendous earthquake that hit. Over 2,000 people have already been found to have perished, be at the rescuers as they try to do everything they can to rescue the ones who are trapped, be with those people who will be moving into that area from the United States and all over the world to go in and help those folks to some type of safety. We'd ask that you be with us tonight, help us, lead us, and guide us, and provide us a safe way home for these things in thy name. Amen.
If you would, direct your attention to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item up, be public comment. Do we have anyone that's signed up?
We did not.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we need to approve the agenda.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Do I have approval on adoption of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Second.
All in favor? Well, we have approval on the agenda and no public comment. So we'll be moving right along to item number two, public hearing, Alexander County Community Development Block Grant on Sterling Road. If I could have Sherri Long to come forward. And do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to approve the public, to open the public hearing. Excuse me.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Chairman and Board. Tonight, we're here to have a second public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Program. The purpose of this public hearing is to disclose information about the Community Development Block Grant application submitted to the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Division. The $645,044 application proposes to rehabilitate seven households and pave 390 linear feet of roadway on Sterling Road. Based on a door-to-door survey of the residents, 91% of the beneficiaries of the project are low and moderate income. Should the Board so choose, an authorizing resolution needs to be adopted for this application, allowing the Chairman to sign all documents necessary for the implementation of this project. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. As you know, we've done this backwards. We submitted the application and now have to do the paperwork and hold the public hearing. So that's why this public hearing is tonight, is to inform the citizens of the application and the actual contents of that application.
Very good.
Any questions or concerns?
I think it's a good thing. We're going to help some people. Thank you.
I make a motion, we close the public hearing on the Sterling Road.
Second.
I made a motion, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
And Kent's on the phone for everyone out there in the audience. So you may hear or may not hear him.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve this Alexander County Community Development Block Grant. Make a motion to approve that and we'd also need to read this letter of authorizing resolution certification.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Everybody's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item will be 2022 Annual Report of the Historic Preservation Committee by Mr. Lee Sharp.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to appear before you. On behalf of the five members of the Alexander County Historic Preservation Committee, it's my pleasure to present this report. You have a copy in your packet of the complete report and I'll simply give you some highlights from the report. During 2022, we did hold a public hearing detailing the proposed downtown Taylorsville district. The county and the town jointly allocated funds to hire a preservation consultant to prepare the national nomination for listing on the National Register. This district includes 44 properties, 75 postal addresses, over 181,000 square feet of commercial and residential space. Contract has been signed and that work is underway. Will take approximately one year to complete. A national registered listing should be considered an honor. The number-one chief practical benefit of having property and a district on the National Register list is the eligibility for a 20% federal investment tax credit as well as a 15% state tax credit. Thirty-five percent makes $65 into $100 as far as getting things improved and developed. And historically, tax credits have proven to be a major stimulator of economic development. During the past year, we did receive notification from the National Park Service that Alexander County has obtained certified local government status. This provides us with an opportunity to seek preservation grants and the county has now approved to administer those. Alexander County accepted the Rural Transformation Grant in the amount of $650,000 for rehabilitation and reuse of county-owned property at 16 West Main. The investment tax credits don't apply here because we've got county-owned property, but this should be an excellent example how a historic property can be transformed and be viable in the community. Other activities during the year, the committee helped launch and learn educational series of public meetings on various aspects of historical preservation. The HPC visited a historic tax credit project in Stageful, also visited Wilkes-Barre, and looked at site sale. All members of the committee attended a UNC School of Government Training Workshop in December. And under the leadership of Connie Kincaid and staff, we're continuing to lay the foundation to preserve the history, architectural, and cultural of Alexander County. So on behalf of the committee, members, our Yoder Chair, Nancy Coley, Betty Long, Helen Chestnut, and myself, we thank you for your continued support of historic activities in the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Are there any questions that we could answer?
Well, Mr. Sharp, I just want to make a couple of statements. I appreciate the taking on the endeavor of implementing the Historic Society in the county. It's great to see tax credits, of course, come in to the owners if they want to, you know, do some rehabilitation or whatnot of the properties. But I appreciate the work that's been placed into it so far.
Thank you. It's our privilege to serve.
Thank you. Good information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Alexander County Historic Preservation Committee's annual report.
Second motion.
Second. All in favor? unanimous?
All approved.
Do we have someone here from the broadband expansion project from Open Broadband?
Yes.
Okay. What's your name, sir?
My name is Kent Winrick.
Kent, please step forward and we'll be ready for your presentation to the Board.
My name is Kent Winrick. I'm the CTO, Chief Technology Officer, and co-founder of the company. And I'm instead for Mr. McCracken tonight. And I just wanted to do a, I think we have got a presentation, there we go, a presentation on where we're at. And I've also got Leslie McCracken with me here, who's going to be giving us a little bit of information as well. We go to the next one. Okay, so we're doing the progress report, upcoming activities, discuss plan for Phase Two, and discuss additional opportunities and next steps. So here are the updates. Right now, we've been working very hard on Stony Point Tower. And Stony Point Tower is fully operational right now. And we've, as of last week, we started installing the first customers off of that tower. Why this is such a critical tower is that it provides what they call backhaul, in other words, a feed to other towers. So the way it goes right now, it starts off at Linnies Mountain where the fiber connection is, goes off to Stony Point. Now, we're going to be able to break off into that area, into the south and southeast part of the county off of that Stony Point Tower. In the meanwhile, we're doing what we call line of sight, which is directing, they can see the tower, and CBRS, which is non-line of sight, you know, somebody behind trees or something like that. And this is one of the first installs of Nokia equipment, which is very high-end equipment. It's tripled the power of the equipment that's at Linnies Mountain. So we'll be able to get further in and provide better signals off of the Stony Point Tower as well. So like I say, we've got the first couple of customers already coming off of that tower as it was turned up last week. And we're doing a controlled rollout. We're just making sure that everybody is satisfied with what's going. But the first customers are online right now. They're getting over 100 meg's of speed right now. More Mountain, we're looking at, is more the one we're rolling?
Solar.
So, okay, yeah, right. So I've got an image of a solar example. We're deploying a lot more solar-type acts or towers because if we can't get power to there, or if there's just a problem with power, we can run everything off of solar panels and batteries. And this is an instance where we're going to roll out a solar power solution because it really isn't reliable power right there. It drops quite a bit. So what we're doing is we're creating a backhaul that is coming off of Linnies Mountain. So backhaul again is the feed from one tower to another. And then we're going to be doing line of sight and CBRS, which is non-line of sight equipment. So that tower is still being worked on. The solar equipment is going to be ordered shortly and we'll be able to start turning that up as well. There's a mobile home park. That's off of Stony Point, correct?
Yes, the louder, louder home.
Okay. So, and the mobile home park that's off of Stony Point, the backhaul's been established to a tower site, or a small tower within the mobile home park. We've already done four installs within two days of the turn-up of the mobile home park. So we're seeing customers coming up on that as well. Some of the southeast hubs, like a Drumstead, is a potential spot we're looking at. And there's some other spots we're looking at as for hubs. So again, it's spoken hub where we're going from Linnies Mountain down to Stony Point and then off to other hubs in the southeast. So we're negotiating with areas in there to create hubs that'll be closer to the customers. The northeast hub off of Hill Farm Road has several installs on it already. Ashbury Mountain, we're unable to establish a contract with the owners of the existing tower. So we're looking at other solutions in that area as well. In addition, we're also looking for something further into the north that will give us even better reach for the northern areas within the county. You go to the next slide, please. So here's some of the coverages that we have right now, mainly in the greens and the like. And I believe the pink areas is the underserved area. So we've got a lot of areas to go in the upper northeast and northwest. I'm actually going to try to go look at a tower after this meeting tonight that's up in the northeast area. And we've got a tower we've identified in the northwest that we're going to start negotiating with the people who own that tower as well. And then the one toward Hidden Night, that's the Stony Point Tower, which will feed that, a tower that we're negotiating down in the southeast, the south. Well, I guess you'd say just south. By the way, it's currently we have 350 customers. That's actually needs to be updated because we have more going with the quick installs that are going on. The Moore Mountain Tower, turns out that the landowner changed their mind as to how we're going to be able to utilize the space. So we're looking at a tower right behind it. It's actually in Wilkes County, but it's much higher. So it should give us a real good range as well. And we should be able to actually fill in more than that blue area. I haven't done the maps yet, but I'll be doing maps shortly and be able to understand what areas we're going to be able to cover with the new tower. And this is an example of a solar, a simple solar setup, just solar panels and batteries in the box and some equipment in the box as well. This would be at a base of a tower. And probably a tower like we're looking at, we're probably have four solar panels as opposed to two. But just to give you an example of, it's fairly neat and tidy. Stony Point updates. We installed the equipment at Stony Point and established link to the mobile home park. Started installs. We're anticipating 158 unserved homes in that service area. So we started picking those off already and then creating two, three-mile hubs in the northeast, in the northeast area of the county. Precise location of LTE hubs will be confirmed once the tower is live. The tower is now live and now we're beginning the testing to be able to see what other tower considerations we can have. Current contractual milestones are being achieved with the addition of the Stony Point Tower. That was a real big, and it took us a little time to get that tower up and running for a number of reasons. One is that we actually went up a little higher and the tower had to renegotiate our contract so they could reach further out. Number two is that we're rolling out the Nokia equipment, which is, everybody knows the name Nokia, and it's a very high-end, very stable equipment. And Alexander County is one of the first counties to get that kind of equipment. And then we brought additional resources during the control rollout phase. What that means is that we're bringing in installers from other areas to, and other technical people into Alexander County to be able to get things done quicker. Thomas Lane, Stony Point, yeah, okay, this is the 158 possible served homes. We have what we call licensed backhaul link. So we've applied with the FCC to get a license to provide the link from Linnies Mountain to Stony Point. And again, we'll provide backhaul into the LTE hubs in the southeast. And we're actually doing more than 270 degrees of cover in this instance. We've got a number of different antennas up there. So example of hub locations, you can see what kind of coverage, especially in the northeast and the south, these hubs will really do a real good coverage in some of the areas. What we could do with these hubs and then break down into smaller hubs where, for the areas that aren't going to be covered by this plot and this RF prediction map. Next one, please. Elk Shoals is one of the examples of a hub down in the south. Nice open territory, can give us a lot of good range. And it's a pretty clean shot from Stony Point to there. So that should be coming up as soon as we're done finishing the final testing at Stony Point, which shouldn't take very long. Next one, please. And next opportunities, like I said, we're working on the new tower to the north and we're working on the hubs to the south. And now that we've got the Stony Point up, that's really going to help us a lot. And then we're going to start looking at upgrades into the Linnies Mountain Tower, how we can add more people in there. Quite, there's quite a few residents on there already. And I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Sounds like making progress. So that's what we're looking for.
Yep.
To get as many, as quick as we can, hopefully.
Yep. Well, we're applying more resources. Now that the Stony Point is, tower is up, we can apply a lot more resources to it. We'll see more people getting installed. And the hubs are going to be critical as well. And Leslie is kind of what we call her queen of hubs. She's the one that helps design all these hubs and makes things happen. She's very good at doing that, too. So you're going to see all the big spool up going right now with more people getting installed quicker.
How many installers do you have working at this time?
Installers do we have working? I think we have, we'll be able to apply five or six installers right now. We're looking at hiring more, too.
You do have five or six at the moment?
That we can bring into the county.
How many is in the county that's been installed?
I think we've got two in the county, two in the county right now. But we're looking to add more.
You said that you had already put four installs in the mobile home park?
The four?
I just spoke with him today. Yes, sir. Marty will reply when we're on Trail Park Fair. I have it on the calendar. That Country Line Road and Raymond Road, right there.
Oh, you just spoke to him today?
Yes.
So, all right, help me understand. What's an install, then? An install, is it's actually been installed or just?
It's getting ready to be installed.
So it's not been installed?
The hub's there. We just got the customer today to agree they want the service. So now we'll go in tomorrow.
But the four in the mobile home park have not been installed?
Right. There will be two tomorrow up there.
Okay.
So the install means it's ready to be into the home?
Yes. We had to wait for the customer to tell us when they were coming home. We could get there and do it.
That's for the mobile home park. Outside of the mobile home park, we do have five that are live, is my understanding.
Customers?
Customers.
I don't have those.
Yeah, we do have five customers that are live and operational. So she's talking about the mobile home park because the hub was just created there?
Yeah.
So I'm sorry about the mix of phrasing.
So it is working for the ones that have it installed already?
Yes.
It's good?
Right. The minute we turned it up, we lit up two right away.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's going to start moving forward real well now.
How many do you have, how many do you have on your waiting list to be installed? Do you have a clue?
Over 100. I'm still working on checking.
If you don't, you slide over to the mic.
I have over 100 on my list as of right now that I'm still working on, doing site surveys for and-
Would it be possible each week to get an update as to the number of people that's been installed?
Once the non-line of sight equipment is up, we can get more, yes.
Yeah, I mean, would it be?
You want to update weekly?
Just give us an update, just send an email to the clerk and, or, you know, and so that she'll know?
Yes.
Because it'd be nice to know because we're getting people asking why it's taken so long to get the service. And I understand it's hard to get the equipment. I understand all that. But at the same time, it'd be nice to have the information. So hey, look, they had 100 on the list. They've gotten 40 of those. They're moving slowly but surely, but they're coming. And it'd be nice to let the people in the community know that.
Do you want that directed toward the clerk?
Yes, because she'll get it to all of us.
Right.
And that would be good because it'd give us some kind of idea. Because I think the more information that we can get to the general public in the county as to exactly what's going on.
Yep.
So that they'll know sort of when they may be getting them. Because I know the northern part of the county's been tough for you. But it would be really nice to get that information so that we'd be able to give it to our citizens.
We are sending out, maybe we could send to the clerk, our, we do like every other month newsletter on what we're working on, how things are going, and maybe include her on that distribution as well.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah. That's something that we publish on our website as well as, as well as people who are on our list, we send it out. So they're staying informed. But there's never too much information.
Never too much information, especially in the community where you're living on the information, the way you can get it out.
Exactly. We'll be happy-
If we can get that out as much as possible, I think it'd be beneficial for our citizens.
Be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it Mr. Win?
Winrich.
Winrich?
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
No worries.
So how, on a typical house, how long does an install take?
Couple hours.
Couple hours?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anything else? Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
I'd like to call on Fire Marshal Mark Earl to give a presentation on Alexander County Training Facility.
Appreciate the opportunity. Good evening to you.
We go ahead, we pull that mic up some.
How's that? Okay, good. I come before you tonight to present a presentation on a fire training facility. Next slide. The need for this facility is the facility for training for all emergency services, which would be law enforcement, EMS, fire, rescue. It's a multipurpose facility. The facility for training the students at the firefighter program that is currently at the high school at this time. It's also for ISO credited to the fire departments for facility training. And I'll talk a little more about that later on. OSFM, Office of State Fire Marshal, their definition of a credited for training facility is a training must occur at a facility that has a three-story tower, burn building, and located on two acres of land. And the maximum credit for this facility would be nine points for their ISO rating. Next slide. Thank you. Here's what the inspection rating is based off of, 105-point scale. As you see there, communications is at 10%, water supply is at 40%, and the fire department's at 50%. Not a lot we can do for communication. That's just what it is, just depending on the technology within our communication system. Same thing with our water supply. A lot of that falls back on the Water Corporation. However, they do have, the fire departments do the inspection of flow testing and hydrants, which they score usually pretty well with that. And then you see there under the fire departments, you have the different things that they are graded on. And I want to bring attention to you down there where it says deployment analysis, company personnel, and training. Those are the three biggest point-getters under the fire service for ISO rating. The deployment analysis, company personnel, can't do a whole lot about that because we deal with volunteer fire departments. However, we can do quite a bit with the training part of it. Next slide, please. I took one of the last inspections and broke it down for you. There under emergency communications, we fared pretty well, got 9.10 out of 10 points. So that's all across the board with any of the fire departments that are inspected. Under the fire departments, again, we go down there where the credit for deployment analysis, company personnel, and training. Like I say, we can't do a whole lot with that because we deal with volunteer fire departments. But I want to pay special attention there for the training. This particular department scored a 2.86 out of the nine points possible. That's pretty low. And the reason for that is because we don't have a facility that these fire departments can train at. The way they get points now is, is if they've got somebody on their membership that works full-time at them in this municipality department, then they are allowed to count those hours that they do for training at that specific facility. Otherwise, they don't get any credit for it at all. Next slide. Here's the water supply. Again, not much we can do with that. However, there under the credit for inspection, flow testing, this department scored seven out of seven. So they do their hydrants. That's the only thing that we can control with that. And if you look there, the 52.9 out of 105 and a half points, that's not bad, but we can improve on that a little bit. Next slide, please. This is the class ratings for our fire departments. We take the 52.91, look up there on the class five rating. It's between 50 and 59.99, which gives it a class five rating, which is really good for commercial. Residential stops off at the class six. So anything below that, it really helps out our commercial facilities. Next slide, please. This is a breakdown on the training points that the fire departments can receive. Again, the training facility in use is the highest points that you can get out of all that. The company training, the officer certification, officer training, pre-planning, all that there can be done at this training facility. Especially your company training, your new driver operator recruit training, established driver operator, hazardous material, all that can take place at this training facility. Next slide, please. Here's the last three departments that we had that was inspected. Again, the credit training, 2.86, 3.07, 2.19. Because we don't have a training facility, they were allowed to count those that work full-time at other departments. Next slide. The proposal, this is the first proposal, which is a mobile training tower. Costs $249,430. We would have to pour a 15-by-20 concrete pad and a 20-by-50 pad and a Conex box. This type facility does not have a burn room in it, built in with it. It being a metal building- Uh, it being a metal building, there's not a whole lot of maintenance with that. However, there would be annual maintenance on the trailer, uh, part of it, because of the trailer tires, the lights, hydraulic system, uh, all that. And with the budget appropriation of twenty thousand minus the twenty thousand, uh, we've got two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, five-hundred-seventy. Next slide. Uh, this is a manufactured fixed facility. This is a facility where a company comes in, they build it from the ground up. A three-story tire would cost us a hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, eight-ninety-six, sixteen. We would have to pour a twenty-by-fifty pad. Uh, this does have a burn room inside of it, that's manufactured with it. And minus the budget appropriation, would be a hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and sixteen cent. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the Taj Mahal that the, the city of Hickory built, uh, or had built. That's a five-hundred-thousand-dollar training facility. Uh, it's got two burn rooms in it. Uh, it's currently over at the CVCC Training Grounds in Hickory. Next slide. Uh, this is what CVCC originally built. It's a building of a wood structure. Uh, they have offered to build this for us here in this county. Uh, next slide. This is a Conex container fixed facility that is located in Troutman. Uh, Troutman Fire Department uses this for their training. Uh, it's Conex boxes that are put together. Of course, like this, we would need six forty-foot, one-twenty-foot. Uh, we'd have to have a crane or a heavy forklift to be able to put the Conex boxes on top of one another. We would need welding, footings, uh, wouldn't even necessarily need a concrete pad, but we would need some gravel. Uh, staircases within it, uh, a burner pan for a burn room. Uh, and then, of course, we'd have to have an engineer stamp with this. The, the other two comes with an engineer stamp. And the total cost on it's eighty-two thousand, fifty dollars. Minus the budget appropriation of twenty thousand, the total cost would be sixty-two fifty. Next slide, please. This is a six-by-six concrete pad for a footing. This is what the containers, the corner of the container would actually sit on. It's a piece of metal that's bolted to that concrete pad, and then the container is actually welded to that piece of metal. Next slide, please. This is how they are joined together when they're on top of each other, stacked on top of each other. Uh, they got a piece of metal there that's welded and makes it more secured. This is the backside of that facility that shows the Conex boxes put together. Uh, it has a roof on it where we can do ventilation, uh, props with it. And if, if you see there in the corner, right up above the, the, uh, pallets there, we've got a sprinkler system, or a sprinkler head that comes out that we can work with, uh, doing sprinkler practicals with it. Next slide, please. Funding, the county is about to receive a hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and forty-eight cent of FEMA reimbursement. Uh, this reimbursement, I would like to use to buy, uh, some outdated radios, or some radios that we're gonna need to replace in 2025. These radios will eventually be cut off, they will not work on the state's Viper system, so we would have to get them replaced. With this reimbursement, minus the, the fifty thousand, that'll leave us with eighty-one thousand. Plus the twenty thousand, which is budget appropriate, that will give us a hundred-and-one thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and forty-eight cent to fund the training facility. That's my presentation. And I will be glad to answer any questions, if you have any.
Lot of information. Which one do you recommend?
The last option.
The Conex?
The Conex boxes.
Okay, it does seem more feasible, I guess. So right now, there's no training credits. The only credits the fire departments are getting is from outside?
Yes, they, if they've got members on their department that works at a municipality fire department, and that municipality goes out and does training on their facilities, then OSFM will allow that department to count that training. We don't have the opportunity for all the firefighters to be able to train on facility training and get that credit, because we don't have one here in the county. In order for the fire departments to be able to get the full credit for it, they would have to go out of the county and train at another facility somewhere else, which would be taking fire departments out of the fire district, which it would be here to fight fires if one were to happen.
Yeah. Well, and this, the ISO, that's an insurance rating?
Yes.
It reduces the cost of insurance for people sitting here in one's listing, so.
Yes.
It's a pretty important thing, so I'm pretty familiar with that, so.
It does save the homeowner, uh, on their insurance premium. The lower the number, the, the more savings they'll have on their insurance premium.
Yes.
How long, how long has this been talked about, Mark?
Way before I ever came here, and probably in the last two years, I'd say, it was brought up again.
So previously, before I was probably on the board the first term?
Been talked about for years.
Would there be a reason that we would not want a training facility in the county?
I don't see.
Is there a negative aspect here anywhere?
I don't see any reason why we wouldn't want it, because, you know, we're doing it for the better training of our firefighters, and plus, we're doing it for the citizens. Uh, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't.
Is this, this type facility, is this a facility where a junior fireman up at the high school would be able to train at as well, or not?
They could.
I don't know how that works, that's why I'm asking.
They could, yes, sir.
Kent, are you on there?
Yes, sir.
Have you heard all this, by the way?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you, have you heard what's been discussed?
Yes, sir, I've listened to all of it. Uh, can you, I'm gonna make a couple comments, Marty.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
You're live.
I'm, I'm totally, uh, for doing, doing this project at some place or some time. I would just like to, uh, be able to meet with the fire chiefs and more of the board, board of directors, uh, to discuss it and, uh, make sure where we're gonna put the thing. And I'd like to know a little more about if it's tied to the college and, uh, on that aspect.
Okay. Is there, what is the, what would be the pros and cons in, in your opinion, being tied to the college, Mark? Do you have any idea?
Nothing says that we have to run a class through the college. That's not gonna get them points, whether it will or it won't. Uh, anything other than that, since the college is contractual, I'd rather do that in closed session.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Kent?
No, sir. Like I said, I'd just like to, uh, be able to meet with the fire chiefs, and, uh, I've had some callers on this, and, uh, from two, three fire chiefs, and even from some, uh, taxpayers, and, uh, there's just, to me today, there's too many questions on, on here today for me to, to vote for. And I, I'd like to see a table until we meet with fire chiefs.
Well, I think the whole thing here, uh, Commissioner Herman, is that we were gonna take this presentation under advisement and then look into it. I don't think there's any way that we'd absolutely make a decision tonight. I totally agree with you. I think there's some questions and, uh, that we need, need to make sure we get answered. And, uh, we look at it so that we can make a, a sound decision on, on what we're gonna do, and where we're gonna put it, and, and the cost in place. So I, I totally agree with you.
Well, I, I don't want anybody to think I'm against it, 'cause like I've said all along, uh, emergency management and fire and the sheriff's department is near and dear to my heart, and, uh, we'll keep moving forward, but, uh, that's where I'm at.
I don't believe anybody, uh, thinks that, so we'll table Mr. Earl until further notice. But thank you so much for the presentation and the info, and I do like the Conex scenario.
Can I say one other thing?
Yeah.
Our next chief's meeting is next Thursday, February sixteenth.
Where's that at?
Be at our office.
Okay.
Fire marshal's office.
You need to understand that if there's gonna be more than three, more than two commissioners there, there had to be a call meeting, had to be advertised for us to be there. So therefore, it'd probably be the best, any kind of meeting that we'd have, that we would have it with the, uh, with, be set up here, and it'd be in a call meeting, and, and we could discuss it. Because it's contractual in closed session.
And that's fine, we can do that.
But let's just state law.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, we can change it, it's no big deal.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we do have a, you know, fire commission that we've, uh, instituted that meets, too. So maybe those members could meet at that. But going a little further, I remember back, the reason that we did a lease on the fire grounds was so we could put it there. Yeah. It was kicked around about CVCC, but I don't think we want a burn house in town. You know, you got Wal-Mart, you got all the houses around, and then even with that, if they're using water, it's running out into the street and down. So, you know, the fire ground seems to be a, a good place unless we come up with something better.
Right. So you said, this Thursday or next?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday. What's the date on that?
Thursday.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth?
Probably what, second Thursday, or something like that?
What time?
Seven.
Seven? I think it might be advantageous, and, uh, board can chime right on in there, but, uh, fire chiefs, and, uh, maybe we should make this, uh, public announcement, because I figure that more than two commissioners would wanna be at this meeting. And also, if we could, let's pull the boards in from those, uh, departments as well.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend maybe president of the board.
Okay.
For each.
That's fine.
Each department?
Yeah.
You wanna have it here?
Mr. Panel, what time was that? I'm gonna try to make it.
On the sixteenth of this month at seven PM.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we could have it here if we advertise it. I wonder if this building's open? Is this real open?
I'll check on it tomorrow.
Okay, you can check it in later.
We'll let you know location later, Kent. Okay.
Pretty good.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, love.
Good info.
Do I have a motion to table this presentation till, uh, later date?
Make a motion to table the, uh, fire training facility presentation.
Second.
All in favor? Moving along, call on, uh, Jamie Starnes' clerk on their budget ordinance amendments thirty-six through forty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, budget amendment number thirty-six is to transfer funds for code enforcement personnel to move from inspections department to the planning department, and also to hire an additional planning department position. The cost of these personnel actions will be covered by funds that were originally budgeted as professional services to pay the COG for a contract for a comprehensive plan. And the contract was terminated because county staff will perform those services. Number thirty-seven is to increase the sheriff's office budget for the use of state funds from distributions of unauthorized substance tax. These special funds must be used to increase the law enforcement budget. The funds will be spent to purchase guns, ammunition, and uniforms. Fund balance is being used for this budget amendment, because these special state funds were received in a prior budget year and are in the fund balance. Number thirty-eight is to reduce the public buildings maintenance department budget, because building, maintenance, and repair costs were budgeted in various county departments for fiscal year 2023, but the amounts were not deducted from the public buildings maintenance department budget line item before the budget was adopted. Number thirty-nine is to increase the EMS budget for, number one, a hundred-and-sixteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars needed to cover salary expenses for the remainder of the budget year due to more overtime for full-time employees than original budget estimates, plus sixty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-eight dollars needed to cover salary expense for the remainder of the budget year due to pay increases as approved by the Board of Commissioners. The increase in the salaries expense budget also requires an increase in the FICA expense and retirement expense budgets. Part of these increases will be offset by the use of EMS department contingency funds, while the remainder will be from increased revenue from investment earnings. Number forty is to increase the EMS budget for the purchase of ventilators. The current ventilators are outdated, unable to be serviced, and parts for them are unable, or, excuse me, unavailable due to the company going out of business. Number forty-one is to increase the library budget for donations received that have not yet been budgeted. Forty-two is to increase the budget for the remainder of fiscal year 2223 for estimated expenses and revenues from the county's contract to sell water to Energy United Water Corporation. Number forty-three is to budget for the local match funds required of the county for the Hancock and Moore Building Reuse Grant Project. The North Carolina Department of Commerce is providing eighty thousand grant funding. And then, project bud, budget ordinance number P five is for the Hancock and Moore Building Renovation Project through the North Carolina Department of Commerce Build and Reuse Program Grant.
That's a lot.
Yep.
I make a motion, we approve budget ordinance amendments number thirty-six through forty-three, and project budget ornament number P five.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Unanimous? Let's see. Moving along, number seven, uh, board appointments and reappointments, uh, by Jamie Starnes' clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, appointments are needed to the Equalization and Review Board. We're gonna reappoint Doug Ramsey, David Odom, Linda Barnett, Donovan Douglas, Alan Grant, and Gordon Knight for one year. Library Board of Trustees appointing Cheryl Feimster for three years. And by statute, we're required to appoint an interim county manager, gonna appoint Marty Panel.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? And that's unanimous. Item number eight, other business.
Move to approve the consent again.
Second.
All in favor? Make a motion that we go into closed session, uh, statute number one-four-three dash three-one-eight, uh, one-one.
Second.
All in favor? And we will enter open. Only to adjourn. Thank you.